Thank you, Mayor. Let us prepare our hearts and minds for prayer. Gracious and Almighty God, we hum the cover for you at this hour, thanking you for this day that you have made, that we're able to rejoice and be glad in it. And now we ask, oh Lord, that you open the minds and the hearts of the citizens of Trotwood, that they're able to work together, that they're able to solve problems together, and that they're able to rise strong together, that they may continue in the work that you have ordained for them to do. And so strengthen them as they process through this meeting, oh Lord. Continue to allow them to be able to do the work what you have called them to do. Let them keep moving, no matter how difficult the situation looks. Let them keep moving toward the mark of a high calling, no matter how gleam it looks. Let them keep working together, because we unite as one and work well together as one. And therefore, we offer this prayer in the name of the risen Savior. Thank you. Amen.
Could you please remain standing and also pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the God of United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair, may I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gales. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Finley. Councilmember Vaughn. Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Page.
Ma'am, a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Gales. Vice Mayor Brown. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Finley. Councilmember Vaughn. Mayor Page.
Chair, are there any public comments this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have several. Mr. Larry Bryant is here to speak about communications.
Mr. Bryant? Mr. Bryant, could you state your name and your address?
Yes, I'm Larry Bryant, 4576 Lotus, Dayton, Ohio, 4817. Meeting, Council, Mayor. I just have a couple things that I've dropped down. I attended that workshop session today at the Eastersville Building, and it was mainly on communications. I spoke to somebody in the Northern School District. It was just an idea that on Fridays, they have a podcast, and they include the city and the school district, and they come together. Because not all their children are bringing their information home. They have a podcast, then they also have a website. They leave everything on it. Another thing, I spoke with Mr. Wheeler about having Ramon Days, formerly Aries Days. It was kind of a lead-in started to have the success that we wanted to have, success. A deal with a scaled-down situation of it and helping people so well again. And, you know, maybe the Chairman of Congress, Historical Society, and, you know, the City of Trotwood all come together and come up with a plan for it. Last but not least, I went downtown to the Audit Office and looked up 5280 Goant Hill. There's a farmer currently farming this land. Nobody could find it in their records that he owned that land, that the City of Trotwood still owns that land. I was like, maybe adding a park there for Town View residents, maybe a splash pad. Right now, there's currently nothing in Town View or a children to do. You know, if it's something to look into and maybe propose a park or something there, that'd be nice. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Morgan Scares is here to speak about Gateway Cathedral. And if I can point your attention to a letter that Mr. Scares asked you to distribute to each of you.
Thank you very much. Morgan Scares, 5636 West Bridge Drive, Trotwood, Ohio, American Council. Not to be a born in your proverbial flesh, but I was here again about a month or so ago and have not heard, with the exception of Ms. Finley, from anyone regarding my request. The request was, is the letter that you had before you was the document I received from the City Manager in April of 2016, when our church purchased what was Mount Olive United Church of Christ from then, the Mount Olive United Church of, from then, United Mount of Church of Christ. An agreement that we made with the City Manager that if we assumed the responsibility of not just the building, but the repairs to date, which totaled over about a million dollars or so, that the city would be willing to mitigate any assessments applied to the building during its vacancy or before. When we went to collect that agreement in 2017, when we were unsuccessful. I'm concerned because, you know, I want the city to be able to, you know, own up to what it is they said they would do. You know, we saved the city $275,000 by assuming that responsibility. And at this point, maybe I haven't heard back from anybody because I didn't come with the appropriate numbers the last time I was here. That's only $15,280.54 that we're asking the city to mitigate at this point. And by mitigate, we mean forgive. You know, plenty of times, our church has come to the aid of this city, whether it was to make sure that the community events went off without a hitch or was to be set up as ground zero when thousands of people were displaced and volunteers passed through our facility and grounds to make sure that the city could regain some stability after the tornadoes. All we're asking for is to continue this conversation, to mitigate these assessments, and take into consideration the investment that our ministry has made into this community. It's not like any other ministry. We employ people there regularly. We feed people there regularly. We run a summer camp for the past six years. We have invested over a million dollars into that community. We have saved that community from what you consider to be blight at that time, and we're just asking you to own up to your end of the bargain. I'm confident, with the exception of Ms. Clark, everyone here has my cell phone number and/or email address, and it would be nice to hear back from someone about what the next steps might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have one other speaker, and I apologize. I have a hard time reading the name. I believe the last name is Bergman. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak this evening that hasn't been called?
Here in the seat tonight. Now, with both to our, our special presentations and recognitions, please. Karen, could you read the, I'm sorry, could you read the caption for me, please?
Mr. Joe Brady, Western Regional Liaison with the Ohio Auditor of State's Office is here tonight to present the city with the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction.
I already told you, I was glad to see you.
Well, you know what, Mayor? We are glad to be here. I am glad to be here. I'm glad to be here tonight, and it's my honor tonight to be here on behalf of Ohio Auditor State Keith Fair to present the City of Trotwood, again, key word being "again" here, the Auditor State Award with Distinction. You know, I was telling the mayor beforehand, our office loves to do and see good audits. And we see that here each year at Trotwood. You come through every year, and that's awesome. The Auditor State's Office, we audit nearly 6,000 entities, and less than 4% of them are even eligible for this award. The others, and I was telling the mayor earlier, I'm going to read through the criteria here again because your constituents, hopefully there's constituents online watching too, that can hear what it takes to get this and see the great job that you guys have done. The Auditor State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments, presented to local governments and school districts upon completion of a financial audit that meets the following criteria of a clean audit report. The entity must file financial reports with the Auditor State's Office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. The audit report cannot contain any financial recovery or any material citations, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, any uniform guidance findings, or any question cause. The management letter must contain no comments related to any ethics referrals, any question cause less than that threshold for uniform guidance, any lack of timely annual financial report submissions, any bank reconciliation issues, a failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, and any findings for recovery or any public meetings or public records issues. And the entity shall have no other financial or any other type of concerns. Every year, this award represents the hard work of all your city employees here that do a great job. The financial staff and everybody that make an effort each day to attain accounting excellence. I want to recognize all the council members here who are watching over the dollars, Mayor, City Manager, and everybody that's done outstanding job here, watching over every single dollar at City of Trotwood here. But I do want to recognize your finance staff here. So I specifically like to have Chris Peoples, your Finance Director, and Julie Kilbar, your Assistant Finance Director, come on up here. Mayor, you'd love to welcome the jointists here, too.
Oh, absolutely.
I specifically want to recognize Chris and Julie for their professionalism and their exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. Congratulations.
This is the way to start off the year, really.
Yes, it is. So on behalf of Ohio Auditor State Keith Fair, I'd like to present the Ohio Auditor State Award with Distinction to the City of Trotwood. Congratulations, Mayor.
We need you close now.
Welcome. Congratulations.
We want to see you next year. Clean audit report. That's all I wanted to say. Karen, could you give us the next recognition presentation, please?
PR-03-24, Sean Lerner, the Community Paramedic Coordinator with the Trotwood Fire and Rescue Department is here to share information about the Safe Sleep Program.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, staff and citizens. My name is Sean Lerner. I am the new Community Paramedic for the City of Trotwood. I've been here for a while, 25 years, so it's not like I'm a new face, but it's a new position, new responsibility. So to take this program off, even though it is a, Community Paramedic is an up-and-coming field, it's very broad. We thought we'd take a little different approach than some of our neighboring communities that already kind of approached this subject by focusing on our infant population at this point in time. It seemed like a pretty good place to start with our youngest citizens. So what the Safe Sleep Program is, is basically a partnership at this point. So we're partnering with the Public Health and Government County. They approached us a few months back. They helped us train five of our staff as, train the trainers. It allows us to train other people to do this program, which we hope to branch out further than Trotwood at some point. They also provided us with materials to pass out and pack in place in case we have an emergency situation where we can remedy that. We'll talk about that here in a second. So what the program is, is called Dose Training or Dose Program. Dose stands for Direct On-Scene Education, which is kind of unique in its own concept. So what we did after those five people were trained, we trained the members of the Fire Department. So each firefighter, PMC, paramedic that is on a truck has received this training. So while they're out and about on other calls, whether it's a smoking smoke detector, called for a CO alarm, or something minor, they'll also be checking around to see if there are signs that maybe an infant resides there, and maybe they can pass on some of this information. So what we're specifically targeting or focusing on are sleep-related infant deaths. This isn't SIDS, it's something a little different. We don't know what causes that. These are specifically those sleep-related infant deaths when you would have seen in the news where a parent maybe pulls over on a child at night, or maybe the crib wasn't serviced. There was too much stuff in it and things like that. So here again, our goals, while we're on 911 calls and other fire service-related calls, we'll constantly be looking for these things. If something's identified, the crews themselves are encouraged to give a Safe Sleep Kit. It incorporates a brochure with information on Safe Sleep techniques like sleeping flat on the back, nothing in the crib, no type swallowing techniques anymore, and things like that. We'll also trigger a referral to myself or one of the other people that were trained at the advanced level to maybe follow up, go back and do a more in-depth home assessment. That would be that environmental check. In case of an emergency, somebody absolutely does not have anywhere for their infant to sleep. So they're sleeping on an air mattress, they're sleeping with a parent, there's no crib, no bath net. We do have an outlet to provide Safe Sleep Solutions. That being said, these are purchased by grants, so there are strings attached. It's not a free crib giveaway, but it is something that we can remedy right off the bat. Trigger one of us, we have some at our station right now. We'll try to get that to them within a matter of hours so that infant will have a sleep, a safe spot to sleep independently, but not in that true sleep situation. That will also be followed up then by Public Health and Government County to do stress. This is not a social services follow-up. It's not a child protective services follow-up, so there's nothing to be worried about. Follow-up is more to make sure that the pack and play, the crib, whatever we give, is follows the parameters and is used for what it's supposed to be used for. So here again, the environmental check, this is basically where the baby's sleeping when it's born. Specifically, we're looking at that zero to 12-month age. Once they're over a year old, infants, they don't move around on their own, so it's not as much of a risk. We're really focusing on that less than one year. Is there a crib, a pack in place? Does the crib have pumper pads? Pumper pads are no longer supposed to be used. I can tell you, I had a son. Okay? I know what it's going to be like for all the mothers or grandmothers that make them, that we have to get rid of. But I can't tell you it's no longer allowed to be purchased in State of Ohio. That doesn't mean they're not out there. Cribs, they're overstocked with toys. Again, I'm a Disney fan. I've got pictures where there's probably more Disney characters in the child in our cribs when they were growing up. I didn't know, if I would have known what I know now, I probably never would have done it. Took a big risk. Is the baby sharing a bed with other children or adults? We need to really discourage that. Each infant needs its own place to sleep. Doesn't mean we can't sleep in the same room. They just need to have some separation, whether it's a bath net beside the bed or something along that lines. Here again, all of our crews have been encouraged that if they find a hazard to try to remove them, they're not going to steal your baby, bump her, or your baby with the stuffed animals and get blind. So if they will be a strong, they are encouraged to try to remove those before they're ready. But I don't often get charged with that, so I'm not going to grab them up, but I'm worried about it. So other options, and that home visit triggered by just our crews. Any resident that is able to call and schedule a home visit with somebody that has an infant or life event with them, you can refer them or give us a call. We'll reach out. Putting classes together, so if you have a group with this life event or you talk to a few groups that are dealing with younger populations. And we're going to try to reach out to families that we know that may have infants to try to hold those classes to spread the word. Contact information's there. It's on our website. This will also be incorporated in further other programs. Is that better? This program will also be tethered together with other child-related programs in the future, including Reverend Backer Car C Program. That's something close to being running. And we're looking at other options, other partnerships with childrens and a few other groups. But we'll focus really on that infant-to-toddler range. So here again, if you want more information, you reach out. If you want to schedule something, you can schedule that. And if there's any questions for me, the program, or community paramedics in general, will be happy to answer this.
Council, do you have any questions? I do. I do know of a program. It's called ABC. Are you aware of that program? It's called ABC.
Just mentioned, yes.
Alone on the back in the crib, ABC, and what you do with it. I took that, I took that course, you know, everything. It gets certified and everything. And I do realize.
And that is incorporated in those flyers that the ABC method is.
I was going to ask you if it was part of that, but I took that certification. It's very interesting because I'm one of those grandmothers that had a giraffe and everybody in there, all the animals were in there, all in a bed with them and everything, including grandma.
And when I had my kids, our pediatrician encouraged that. So we had the baby wedges to keep them on their side. We had the bumper pad. As data's come out, we know that it was no longer relevant. So for me to pass that on to my daughter and say, well, the kids, you survived it. You need to have them here, as I said. That's something that culture that we need to change and focus on some of that learning, and it's touched on those families.
Because the infant mortality is really critical.
It is.
And this will curtail a lot of it, I do believe.
And this region in particular has a high incident. We did have an incident. It was actually an arson, but our crews responded here right around Christmas time. We did have a rash of them a few years ago. Kind of put us out of the statistic more, which is why we're focusing on them.
Thank you so much. If there are any questions?
First of all, I want to say thank you so much. You're very informative. I just want to make sure that we capture this, one of our, as a matter of course, being here next season.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, Council. Yes, you're welcome. You're welcome.
I'm just curious. Just curious, you said that this is one of the higher incidence areas. Why is that?
There's a lot of factors that go into some of this. It's a lower-income issue because they have a tend, lower-income families have a tendency to sleep closer to the other. They have lack of options as far as safe sleep options, as far as cribs and other things along those routes. There really hasn't been one specific thing that we've been able to pinpoint. It's just this region in general, we've known for a while we seem to have an issue, especially with our younger population, whether it's by childhood trauma and stuff like that. So it all kind of falls into that. This is an area that receives a lot of attention in the news media when it happens. So I think it gets, I won't say one portion, but it gets more focus than some of the other things. It's also one of our easiest things to change. Simple with education. They say "simple" only because it's simple to present it, not simple to change, hard as mine and whatnot. But it's something that doesn't cost us much to do, and it was a good starting point.
I think that's it this time.
All right.
Thank you so much. Karen, could you read the next one?
PR-04-24, Mr. David Burrell, Chief Executive Officer of Future IQ, will present the Communications Strategy Toolkit that was created for the outcomes of the Project Launch Event, Communication Survey, and Focus Group Sessions.
Well, hello. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. So great to be here. So my name is David Burrell, and I'd like to give you a brief update on the communication strategy. Next slide, please. So just as a bit of an overview, this work was originally initiated with us through the City Manager. Out of a real commitment, so the brief was to figure out how to best communicate with the community with a desire to have the information about what's happening in the city, important information, get to as many people as possible in the community. The project aims, as they evolve, it was really about gathering new input from the Trotwood residents in terms of what kind of communication they want, how they wanted to reach them. Part of it also is creating an enhanced communication strategy and toolkit, and expanding the ways to inform and update the community. And I should add too that this work is really building on a lot of really good work that the staff is already doing. I want to specifically call that out. We weren't about reinventing the wheel so much as finding the ways to expand that, perhaps update some areas and bring some additional sort of ideas to how to refine the communication approach. In terms of the community input, we, this was very strongly oriented to gather input from the residents. We built on previous work, and some of that included work we had done in strategic planning several years ago. We conducted a survey. We had a launch. I know a number of you were at the launch for its Focus Group Sessions. So we tried as much as possible to gather meaningful community input because obviously we want to figure out how to talk to the community. We should ask them. That was the sort of approach. And I think we got really good, in-depth input from enough people, and many of whom actually are in the room here tonight. So I want to share with you what came out of that. So next slide, please. Oh, sorry. We did review the current communications. We asked residents about where they got information from, how useful that was, how they'd like to see that changed. So we did all that work. Next slide, please. So the strategy framework, I just want to walk you through this at the level of highlights. So next slide, please. So the overarching objective, as it evolved through the project, came down to these points. So as I said, we're building on the good work that's already been done. But one of the things that emerged a lot in the community discussions was around trust. And it's not inferring that there's a lack of trust, but people wanted to have the kind of communication and connection that built trust. There's a really strong desire to have a really close relationship between the community, residents, and yourselves as elected officials and government broadly. So that was one particular objective. Another one was looking for ways to engage residents in meaningful discussion and interaction, and particularly in person. One of the real characteristics of what I've heard in this community is people are really craving the in-person connection with people in leadership roles, whether it be as heads of departments or as counselors. People talked a lot about wanting to be able to have all of those opportunities to connect firsthand and in person. You know, all that online stuff, website, that's all good. But they, what they really want is they want to have that kind of touch and feel. And I think that's, that's one of the things that makes you Trotwood, right? I mean, Trotwood is a community that has a really kind of strong social fabric, and people really want to have that in hand. So I thought that was a really interesting outcome, an objective that emerged. And then the third one there is a lot about telling the story of Trotwood. You know, really reframing and presenting what's happening here. Because this community does, has had a reputation, but you are well beyond that. You have so many good things here that people are really anxious to tell that story and to sort of have that pride in the community, being articulated, sort of an urban uplifting conversation about the community. So those are the three big ones. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. I'm just going to touch on these things with the broad action areas. And in the, there's a document you've got, which is the story board, it has a lot more detail, I want to go through all that, that's for more than buttons and bolts. But the high level areas is five of them, that are coming out as the recommended sort of core actions with some pieces under these. One is about revitalizing and enhancing the newsletter. When we ask people how they got information about the city, almost everybody pointed to the newsletter as a really valuable resource. People like it printed, they like it online, but they like the newsletter. And they want, they want that to be really a core focus of communication with their main residents. There's lots of ideas in there about sort of the format of it, and how we can turn it into more of a spotlight, and it becomes sort of a community resource, as well as the city telling the residents what's going on. Whether it celebrates locals, you know, there's ideas like that, but that's a really primary piece. And we think that there's some real opportunities to revitalize and enhance that communication platform. So that was the first one. The second area is around partnerships. And as the gentleman mentioned earlier, the schools are a key partner, but we heard from the Chamber of Commerce and others through the process. If we're going to develop all these good stories about the community and what's going on, then we want to have content be generated by a lot of the people. There's a real desire to see, you know, the good news stories, success stories, you know, new businesses coming to town, new residents, why did they move here? But tapping into those partnerships to be able to find those good messages who are seen as a, as a really good pathway for people that we spoke to. The third one there is about increasing the city involvement in local events. And again, I touched on this earlier, there's a real desire for that personal, hands-on connection. I think essentially, the community is saying they'd love to see you at all the events. And love to see you, city staff and key city staff at a lot of events, and you know, local layman events and so on. But people spoke, almost every session, people talked about wanting to have that direct connection in a more informal setting than perhaps at a council meeting, where they can talk about things and get to know you, and you to know them, and so on. And there's some ideas for what about that. The fourth point there, I've also touched on, but it's about rewriting the story, the Tropwood story. And I've been working with this community since 2019. And it's clear that there are a lot of things happening here. And you've got a real momentum, and people are pretty excited to get the word out about, you know, how you're positioning yourself as a community, the type of successes you're having, and the way you're moving forward with investments, and becoming attractive to investors and developers and future residents. And so we've got some ideas there about how to be able to reframe and re-craft that story. And that's ultimately about reputation, and that's inward looking and outward looking. So, you know, sort of a much sort of higher tone, a more excited sort of voice about the future. And then the fifth one there is, you know, these are really solid actions that have come out of our research and our sort of discussions with the community. But there is a suggestion that we probably need to be thinking about putting more resources into that. I think you're now a city that's big enough with enough stuff going on, that you're going to have to think about investing in some sort of specialty communication component. There's a lot of technology pieces these days. But somebody who's really got their focus on those communications, I know your staff do a really great job already. We're talking about, you know, the appetite seems to be there for you, you need to have, you know, a really dedicated focus on that. That's something we're suggesting to explore to see when the right time for that is. But there are lots of sort of pieces of communication that can be built into a specialist role like that. So that's where we sort of got to. We had our final meeting today with the community, we've got some additional ideas which we're going to add into the toolkit we're developing. We'll be ramping that up in the coming week or so, after we're getting that to the city manager. That's going to include not just the strategy as we're sort of laying that out, but also elements of a toolkit, so templates and sort of ideas and examples that we can point to to show how to turn the strategy into reality. So, so with that, Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come and give you an update. I think it's been a really interesting discussion in the community. There's clearly a deep desire to communicate, connect, and tell your story. And that's what hopefully we've been able to capture this from, so thank you.
You know what, I really appreciate you coming in to help us. Sometimes, when you're in a situation or a city, you just know what's going on. But when you come on the outside and look in, it helps, it helps a lot. So we are, I appreciate you being here for the last five years. And I want to open up, is if anybody else wanted any comments or they have any questions? You must have done your job.
Thank you very much.
As usual, thank you so much for your time.
Of course, thank you.
Alright.
We have one more presentation, PR 05-24. Tropwood Branch Manager Yudmi Hansen is here to provide an update from the Dayton Metro Library.
Ms. Hansen, it's always good to see you, Yudmi.
Good to see you. Good evening there, page and council members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Yudmi Hansen, and I serve as a branch manager of the Tropwood Branch at the Dayton Metro Library. I'm just here today to give an update about what's going on in February at the library. We started out Black History Month with Black History Bingo Night last week, and this afternoon, we did a really awesome program, Black History Canvas Art. If you missed these two programs, don't worry, we've got a lot of other stuff planned for the month. Check out our calendar, come into the branch, get a calendar, or you can check it out online. The Black History Canvas Art that was created this afternoon by the community will be on display all month in our display case, so why don't you check that out, some of the art is really cool. This coming Wednesday is our monthly food pantry from 3:00 to 5:00. We do the food pantry every first Wednesday of the month from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Anyone is welcome to come, there's no age requirement, or even residency requirement. Anyone can come and grab the food back. So we've got a lot of good stuff for Black History Month, but I just wanted to highlight one program. We're ending Black History Month by telling stories through quilts. Participants will create art using quilt patterns to tell their story or their family's stories. I saw some examples of what this will look like, it looked really cool. I think this is a program that you have to register for in advance, because there's limited stuff, so check it out, come into the branch and register in advance. And I also wanted to highlight some ongoing stuff that we have going on. We always have several tech programs where patrons can come, learn about tech, some of it's stuff just like email basics or internet basics. But if you have, but if residents have a specific question that they want answered, you can always schedule a one-on-one appointment with our tech specialist, Alicia. She can sit down and help you learn a new skill one-on-one, and this is a really great way to, if you're a little nervous or scared to ask questions, this is a great way to do it. She can even teach you things like how to use FaceTime to talk to your grandkids, we get questions like that. So stop by the branch or give us a call to schedule a one-on-one tech appointment. We're also hosting, once again, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program at the library. Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, starting tomorrow, Vida will be helping patrons do their taxes for free. It is appointment only, and the branch just hosts the program, but you can stop by the branch or give us a call, we can help connect you with Vida where we can set up your appointment. And yeah, that was about it for all the updates I have right now. Like I said, stop by the branch, pick up a calendar, come say hi, we'd love to see everyone there. Any questions? Oh, let's see. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, we're at 9:30 to 8:30. And then Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, 9:30 to 6:00.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, if there are no questions from Counselor.
Alright. Thank you so much, it's always good to see you.
Good to see you.
May I have a motion to approve that the Senate General?
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Steve.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
I'm going to move into my resolutions. Kara, would you please read the first resolution?
R 24-24, a resolution by the Tropwood City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into an economic development slash government equity program project agreement with Montgomery County, accepting funds in the amount of $500,000 to provide funding support for Technico, AKA Project Papyrus in the city of Tropwood.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This resolution does allow two things, allows us to accept $500,000 grant from Montgomery County to help support Technico expansion in the city of Tropwood, as well as allows us to begin to administer the program. I'm going to ask Chad Downey from the Tropwood Community Food Corporation from Ford to give some commentary.
Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Counselor, thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk about this. This is really the last piece, this and the following resolution, for our support for Technico. We're really proud that we were able to work with the company to make an application to the Edge of Committee, which is a county process, this is county funds, not city funds. And we received, I think, the second highest overall award, right behind Joby Aviation, the City of Dayton project. You may have heard about that, with the flying vehicles factor that will be coming. So really excited to bring these dollars to the community. This $500,000 can only be spent on fixed assets, so meaning physical improvements to the building. So as many of you know, Technico is going to be occupying the former spec of the built building, but there's no offices in there, they're making significant upgrades, both in infrastructure, as well as other means to that building, to be able to take all the equipment that they're going to be putting in there, which will be right around $60 million total of equipment, plus all the tenant permits. So costs could get up to the $80 million, but we're expecting them to be around $65 million total at that facility there. So with that, are there any questions on this piece? And again, this, this resolution is between the county and the city for the city to administer these funds.
Counselor, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Downey, did you say, what building is Technico taking over?
They're going to be going into 6206 Wolf Creek Pike. This is the newest building in the industrial park that was built last year.
Okay, thank you. Why is that available sign still out there?
Oh, great question. And for those who didn't hear that, why is the available sign still out there? There's still about 20 acres on that site right there that is still available for development. So that site right now could maybe fit up to a 300,000 square foot building, or maybe another 200,000 square foot building. The goal is to have that available for companies that need to have a build-to-suit opportunity going forward. So we won't see a spec building built there, market's really not positioned for larger spec buildings right now. But we're working actively for potentially additional sister companies of Technico, which was acquired by a company, international firm called BeyondTag. You'll see that they're going to move their branding from Technico to BeyondTag here in the future, so if you see that, know it's the same company. But that's an exciting proposition and opportunity for the city of Tropwood to be a choice for BeyondTag to bring other companies and continue to grow their base here in the community. And so far, I think we'll make this a strong case, Counselor.
Mr. Downey, have any employees who would like to go to break?
Thank you, sir. Right now, they are targeting 223 employees based on their submissions to the state as well as Tropwood. They currently have 70 at their location in Miami'sburg, and they're going to be bringing over as many as they can from there, but we're still going to need to fill the difference between the 70 to 223. So we're already working with them to partner with organizations like Miami Valley CTC to create pathways for opportunities for students, as well as adults who take some of the programming from that institution. We'll be working with Tropwood Madison, as well as some of our other institutional partners, to make sure we've got the ability to deliver that workforce right here at Tropwood.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Any other questions, Counselor?
So we are, we're getting an additional 153-plus, if you take the 70 from the 200.
Exactly, that's right.
I'm doing the math up here.
The way, the way I look at it is we're getting all 223.
Oh, yeah, I'll agree with that too, but additionally, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much, Sarah.
Thank you.
Anybody else having any questions, Counselor?
May I have a motion to approve, PR 04-24, please?
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Kara, if you read the caption of the 24, Edge 25.
A resolution by the Tropwood City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Technico and authorizing $500,000 in economic development slash government equity program funds to be provided to Technico for funding support.
Thank you, Mayor, this resolution establishes the actual edge rank agreement between the city of Tropwood and Technico, as well as us to administer the grant, as outlined in the previous resolution, R 24-25. And Mr. Chad Downey, I'm talking about the agreement between Technico and Edge of the city of Tropwood.
Thank you, City Manager. Again, this is related to the prior resolution. This really codifies the agreement between the city and the company for us to administer this grant. This grant is a reimbursement basis, so they will have to make the expenditures, we will verify that they were spent within the requirements, and then we will issue a reimbursement, and then the city will get a reimbursement from Montgomery County for that. So it's a detailed process, but this affects how that's going to work, and the CIC will work with the city to administer and oversee that process going forward.
Any questions? Alright, well, thank you, Kara.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselor, appreciate it.
May I have a motion to approve, R 24-25?
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Kara, if you read the caption of the 24-26.
A resolution by the Tropwood City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Montgomery County, accepting community development block grant funds in the amount of $75,000 for phase one of the Eppington Water Main Replacement Project.
City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, we're really excited about the opportunity to set $75,000 community development block grant dollars in Montgomery County. We're making some serious upgrades in the water line, beginning from 709 North Evans and running south to the Dan End. And I believe I've had Johnny McCuskey here, and if you see him, Mayor, you heard him talk about that.
Good evening, city men, mayor, council citizens. It is a pleasure to stand before you. We have been working very diligently on Broadmore and other water lines. It's been tedious on trying to find grant funding, but we were finally successful. We've had to divide Eppington up into four phases due to the length of the water line and the cost associated with it. Although we could have applied for one grant, it wouldn't have been really feasible for us because we would have had to use so many local dollars in order to complete it. So the most efficient and effective way of completing the Eppington line is to divide it into four phases. We also applied for OPWC funding, and we have been successful in obtaining that, but tonight it's just CDPG dollars.
Are there any questions, Counselor? The opportunity was granted, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright, may I have a motion for, for R-24-26, please?
So...
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Kara, with Edge 24, Edge 27, please?
A resolution by the Tropwood City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Montgomery County, accepting community development block grant funds in the amount of $75,000 for phase one of the McMillan Water Main Replacement Project.
Yes, Mayor, this resolution allows us to accept, again, $75,000 community development block grant dollars. We'll be making major upgrades of McMillan, from 805 McMillan to around the St. Mark Road, and I'll let Johnny and Stephen talk about it.
Thank you, once again. This project is divided up into two phases, and it's not as long of a... This project is divided up into two phases, and it's not as long of a road as you know. For both projects, we're going to be going from six-inch lines to eight-inch lines, which means we're also going to be increasing the water flow. This will include upgrading fire hydrants and valves along the line. Johnny, what's this going to mean for water main breaks in the area?
There'll be no more oscillation.
And getting these grants, it is really tough. It's very competitive. I forget how many people applied. What was it?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, and we got two. And you have to be in the top fourteen, and we ended up with two of them. So, it's great for our infrastructure. As you guys know, there's a lot of people applying for grants for infrastructure, and we got two. So, it's good news, really is.
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. McCuskey.
Yes, sir.
Just kidding. I wanted to watch you score.
Councilman, I mean, Vice Mayor Brown?
Do we have a projected timeline as far as where the work to be completed, or when it will be started?
Yeah, it has to be completed in twenty-twenty-four. So, we're getting everything approved, getting our stuff together to go out to bids, and all of that sort of work.
Thank you.
One clarification for me. I know the first one was four phases, with the seventy-five thousand being for the first. Are we guaranteed a grant for seventy-five thousand for the other three, or just...
We are not guaranteed at this point. We would have to reapply each year as we're moving forward with the projects.
So, those residents that are living on Eppington, you start at one point, and you're only doing phase one. I'm just trying to get clarification with those that are listening, too, so they understand that we would get the whole street, but we're starting at one point, so it may not be on their end of the street, because we're going to have questions.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
You know what I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
So, when we put this project together, we went out and we got a quote to do it all, to do all of Eppington. I think it was a little over two million dollars. I think it was a little over two million dollars, and that's why we had to break it up. But we'll definitely go for grants every year, all the money we can get that they'll...
I'm just trying to make it plain and simple.
I understand.
Because the first thing somebody is going to say, well, my...
On my part.
I live at eighteen-hundred Eppington, but why is much to be done? But just trying to be transparent so everybody understands. Now, on the second one, which we're talking about now, it's only two phases, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so not as much, not as much of a mountain. And I want to make sure that even on Eppington and both of these streets, they're all going to have a six, they're going from a six to eight inch on both of those. So, the waterfall and everything is okay.
Better pressure, better hydrants, so we're running a very different...
One of the things that many of the community residents may not understand, but as you increase hydrant water flow, it's really important for people to understand that your insurance, through the recommendations and the rating of your fire department, not only the response time, the number of personnel, the size and the water flow, the hydrant availability, through the NFPA, National Power Protection Association, they rate your department. All of us pay an increased or a decreased rate, depending upon their ability to service the community in a timely fashion. So, not just traffic flow, good roads, but hydrants and water flow and those things that you use every day. We need to all be appreciative of these improvements. Thank you.
That's all, Karen. Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to say in total transparency before I vote on twenty-four twenty-seven, I would like to leave my counsel's opinion, because I do, I am a resident of Montgomery County.
It's a fair question, Council Finley. Is the general proposition when it comes to matters of whether or not there's a conflict of interest when it relates to the expenditure of public funds and the impact on an elected official? The general principle is, is that if something is for the benefit of the larger community as a whole, I would argue that this is part of the standard infrastructure improvement that benefits the entire city, and that there's an indirect benefit to you as a result of by virtue of you living there. In the same way, as the infrastructure goes about the city, you pick another area to upgrade, if you happen to live there, it's your turn. So, I don't believe that that requires you to recuse yourself from the vote. However, if you were to do that, I think you could understand that would be fine to do that. I don't think that would violate any principle of ethics to vote, or to not vote. I would anticipate that this project will have enough members of council to vote, so your vote isn't critical one.
I would like to add that the reason these roads were chosen is due to the excessive number of breaks per mile. So, it actually had nothing to do with Councilwoman Finley's residence, or anyone else's, is based purely on the data and the number of breaks per mile.
Any other questions?
I would just add that further reinforces my belief and my opinion that there's no need to recuse yourself on the vote.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve? Approve.
Second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. You have the last one.
R twenty-four dash twenty-eight. A resolution by the Trowland City Council enacting a moratorium up through and including July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, on the acceptance of applications for and the issuance and processing of new permits for the building, development, expansion, or improvements, maintenance accepted, of three-dash-four family dwellings and multifamily dwellings in the city of Trowland. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The city would like to enact a moratorium on new applications for multifamily homes and building permits, and for dwellings, expansion, or improvement, or maintenance of such. The reason why we're asking for that is, we're going to take a look at our land use and our comprehensive plan in the city, and we just want to have time before we get inundated with a bunch of applications for multifamily housing, to look at how we want our community to look at, look in the future. Typically, those comprehensive plan land use plans grow over a ten-year timeframe we look at. So, we're going to be doing that, and we just think it's a good idea that we implement a moratorium at this point, so that we don't get inundated with a bunch of applications while we're going through the process of our land use and comprehensive plan.
Council, are there any questions?
Mr. Calhoun, I know that it's a balance always between providing homes for families and children, and at the same time, you have to look at whether or not you want to excessively bring in the involved multifamily dwellings, and as you're doing that, you're also walking away from something that we recognize, is that we want to encourage home ownership, which most of these people do not own a home that they live in, by design. So, it's a balance, and it's one of the reasons that you have to take a look at it as you progress. Thank you.
Council, I just, scale of nature, we have to, I couldn't give you because...
Yes, and that's a good question. It does not have any bearing on anything that's already in progress right now. That's part of the reason why we kind of want to get this moratorium now, so that we don't get any more. It gives us an opportunity to really look at our land use and comprehensive plan, and have some community input in our plans about how we want to look here in the future.
Chris, did you want to make a comment on this, because I know you did legislate on here. Could you give us some insight?
I think it's a wise decision. It's been quite a while since the land use plan has been really been reviewed and discussed thoughtfully, and will give a council an opportunity to make some decisions from a basis of wisdom. And, again, the intention is not to prevent certain things from moving forward. It's a question of how we should move forward and how that fits in with a broader vision. You know, there's a lot of activity, economic development going on in Trowland right now. Trowland, twenty-five, thirty years ago, when I was a kid, going out to the, the single wall doesn't exist, and I think that the council wants to take its time to see how you want that vision to look. So, it's perfectly, perfectly appropriate to use the tool of a moratorium to accomplish those goals.
I just had one question, because if we get to the six months, is there any way of an additional six months if we don't have a decision by then, or you know?
Yes, a moratorium can be extended. There are legal limits, in the sense that a moratorium cannot be created for an indefinite period, but by doing it at six-month increments, we can track the progress of where the city is in reviewing this. There will be reports to council. In fact, I like the idea of the six-month moratorium, because that will mean that there's more frequent reports to council, so that everybody knows where we are in the process.
Are there any other questions, Council? Any other questions, comments? May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Karen, if you have any other business? Madam Mayor, I have no whole new business to present. I have all of your comments, or any comments? We're rolling around, okay? Okay. Councilmembers? You all... I'm looking back at you so good last time. You never refused to go for us. I was looking at it, just happened last month. All right. You're wonderful. I really don't have a lot of things to thank the other guys, I think, that's coming up. Everybody, and I'd like to thank all the citizens that's coming out. It's nice to see that in the audience, to see the artists kind of getting along. I like that. Okay. Vaughn, you're number two. I didn't put you first. You should have been at the last meeting, you know. We don't keep her fresh, but at least two...
You should have brought me. I think, Madam Mayor, first of all, I want to recognize and make welcome our newest council person, Martha Clark, Ward Two. Thank you. Pleased to have you seated with us and become a part of the team. I was really happy to hear several things, and I'll try to go through this quickly. August Award, Mr. Peoples from the Finance Department. Fantastic, year after year. And I'll tell you, it's not easy for that to happen. I worked for city government for years, different city managers, and we never got one. So, thank you for your effort and the recognition, and for the community to feel comfortable in the fact that we're doing things the right way with our money. Safe Sleep Program, Charlotte, thank you. Thank you for the service you provide to the community, and believe me, I'm going to go home and I'm going to speak to many family members about the bumpers and the cribs being illegal. It's like, really? So, you helped me just in this few short minutes. Thank you for that program and what it brings to the community. Communications, the project, I was president, one of the meetings, we had real good input, at least in my opinion, and so I think we're going to take that to a, to a good outcome collectively for the community. I certainly think...
Councilwoman Vaughn, I'm kind of squeezing a little bit. If we usually go down the road...
I know.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you. I have to echo Councilmember Vaughn. Presentations were very informative, and I want to say thank you and congratulations to Mr. Peoples in the Finance Department. That is a hard thing to do, not just for cities, but schools as well, so fine job. In addition to that, I want to welcome Councilwoman Clark, and also, City Manager, one of Technico's, I appreciate the updates. Being the Councilwoman, it really helps to get the information beforehand, so that we can understand the decisions that we're making, especially in consideration. So, thank you very much. Ms. Landis? I know we've been working together this week, and I appreciate your patience on the objectives of making sure that we get our representation in place. Thank you to everybody who's here today.
Councilwoman, at large, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Again, I just want to echo what my other councilmembers have said, and also send a big thank you to our dedicated and professional staff, Mr. Peoples, and also Mr. Rico Killburger. We couldn't do it without you guys. Thank you so very, very much. And also to thank Mr. Bryant for participating in the workshop. Oftentimes, we have events, and we do not get a lot of citizens' participation. So, thank you so much, Mr. Bryant, for your participation. Thank you for your excellent suggestions. I do hope that we take those and get back with you. One of the things we talked about tonight a lot was communications. We have to do a better job at communicating with what we have. I know we used the newsletter, that's just one form of communications, but there's different ways to communicate. For example, Mr. Sears came in tonight, he was here last month, and I think it's very important to hear from our citizens. So, I would like to, for us as a council, to take action items when we have suggestions and feedback, and get back with our citizens on a timely basis. And I would like to say, I am aware of the fact that our city manager and our legal counsel, they're staffing the letter to Mr. Sears. I wish he was here, and I wish we would have let him know that we have heard him, and we are following up with him. So, communications is very, very important. I think it's an oxymoron when we say that we have a good communication strategy, but we can do a whole lot better. So, I'm looking forward to our communication workshops continuing there. And again, just want to thank our citizens for coming out. I pride myself on making sure that you guys know I hear you. I know it's not election year, you guys just elect a meeting, but you all have my telephone number if you ever need anything, if I can support your assist in any way. My role as your council at large, I represent all of Trowland. Unlike some of my other colleagues, they have specific wards, I'm here for the entirety of Trowland, so please never hesitate to reach out if I can assist in any way. Thank you.
Clark, I'm sorry.
Well, I wanted to take a moment and thank all the council for the appointment. I, you know, I'm just honored. I also want to thank our city clerk for all, for guidance, as well as staff. I've had a really warm welcome from staff and our city manager. I want to thank you for all the updates as well. So, I don't have much yet, I just started tonight, so, thanks, thanks to everyone.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, my colleagues have pretty much said everything that needed to be touched on, but we can't say it enough how proud we are in regards to our board with distinction. And I think, again, that key word is distinction, and to have that another year, to have that consecutive, that just means so much. And to have that another year, to have that consecutive, that just means so much to the city. Um, again, directly to you, Councilwoman Clark, we are so happy to have you. The main thing we look forward to, and as I do with each one of the councilmembers, is to work together. I know I state that a lot, but I am so passionate about us working together, um, on one accord in continuing to move the city forward. Thank you so much, Mr. Peoples and each, every member of the staff. Um, I don't think we can say thank you enough, but we are proud. We are proud to be in the city of Trowland. We're proud to be here as leaders. We're proud to engage with you. Mr. Bryant, I have seen your messages in regards to your suggestions, and we are excited. Some of those things I know will take time, but we're looking forward to that. Some things, culture changes and budgets change, but we like engaging with our citizens, and we do hear each and every one of your ideas. Please keep them coming. As we're growing, we're able to move forward in, in abundance of different directions. So we look forward to that. And again, I say that as we move forward collectively. I'm proud to serve the city of Trowland. Thank you.
City manager?
Madam Mayor, I'm excited about the momentum we've got moving to twenty twenty-four. We've got some very exciting projects that we're coming forward with, and I think that, that people are gonna pay attention to us. Thank you.
Oh, it's my time, right? I am, I am so happy. We have a full council this evening, and I wanna give them a round of applause from me. This is, I mean, lovely, but anybody that's on the staff that's in this meeting tonight, would you please stand? If you're, if you're part of this one? I, we, I say this, we have the best staff. We have the best staff and the, the young lady from the library, Miss, uh, would you please stand also? Because you're part of us too. And I just wanna give them a little round of applause. Because some of the people that were standing, you may see here, but they're back by, a lot of people that are not here tonight. And those, what, that really makes the city work. All the little things, you know, all this preparation we have here is all printed out. It's pretty. It's got all flowers and it's just rosy, but it was a lot of people that took the time to get all of this in order, and they need that applause too. So I'm humbled to be here in your presence. And I'm, I'm excited about where we're going. And I promise you, as long as these people are here and the, and the constituents are in the city, and we have the staff which did not change, the progress is only gonna get better and better as we move along. So, Mr. Bryant, I, I appreciate you coming out. I listened, and I told the gentleman last week, we're starting a program from here. City manager, I'm working on, I wrote those down, what you wanted to, okay? And, uh, we're gonna look into some of those things. And not just Mr. Bryant, but anyone out there, you can contact me anytime. I'm using the office. I think they didn't turn on me up there, but I'm in the office a lot during the week. But, um, my phone number is available for you to call if you have any questions. Uh, I like to have that open and honest communication. But I'm not gonna keep you alone because we've been here, and I think we've had a great, we all might secure. Any questions for anyone? May I have a motion to adjourn? Have a great evening.